You ready?
Yep.
So, my first open agenda item is my April/May JFS data report. Just noted changes from April. On page one, the childcare program, we did see a little over a hundred more children enroll and qualify for subsidized childcare, correlating that maybe to summer, that they qualified in May in preparation for summer, that's what our belief is the increases. On page two, again, this is in the Public Assistance Division, under the Customer Service Center, we did see a reduction in those clients seen in the lobby by about three hundred clients, so that's a good thing for us. We have the kiosk and our citizens are utilizing that more, so that's less lobby traffic. That's a good thing. Calls received have been consistent as far as what's coming through our Customer Service Center. On page three, under the Ohio Means Jobs Work Experience Program. Commissioner Clyde, you asked last month, last time, about the hiring events and then the people seen and why it seems so minimal. It really is minimal at times. We're gonna add a section, Mandy's here to present on something else, but she and I talked about this. What we're doing now, because we're not getting a lot of foot traffic, so these are two events and actually two people actually showed in person for those.
Mm-hmm.
We're doing some things with Facebook Live. Mandy, you wanna come up here and sit for a second? Um, where we're sharing the employment opportunities through Facebook Live and we're getting a lot of hits.
Thousands of hits.
So, you wanna talk about that?
Yeah, so, because we're at full employment, the people that are actually coming in, ready to, ready to go to work, they don't have barriers, it's minimal. And so, to help our employers out, still get the work out there because they still need jobs filled, we've brought them in and we've started going live with them, telling what the jobs are that are available, what skills are needed, pay range, and we put that on social media and then we're tagging their sites, ours, and we're getting, we're seeing much more traffic. Employers are getting many more applications through that process. So, we'll add that line item so you can see, we did it, we tested it in Demands Jobs Week, first week in May, and one of the employers had over like two thousand views on just the one three-minute video for Facebook Live. So, and we did five of them that week, so.
And they got more.
Applications. Yep.
And the live video, you can watch it.
It over, yep.
You'll be watching it live.
Yep.
So, we're gonna add that, Facebook Live hits or views or whatever, just so you under, but we're still wanting to have a physical presence too, it's just never seen.
However, we can get them.
Yeah. Foot traffic.
That sounds great.
So, good. And then, relevant to the total number of hiring event attendees in May, three hundred and fifty-four, that number is so high because we had our Career Connections Event at NeoMed and that represents the young people that attended that. So, that's why you see that spike from two to three hundred and fifty-four.
Oh, yeah, and that total number of business services, business services, is that like helping with resumes and things like that, or what is that?
Yes, but I'll let Mandy elaborate more on that.
Which one is it?
It's this line here.
Business services provided.
That could be anything that we're offering to our businesses, so it's as far, if they call in and want a job order posted and us to put it on our website, that's a business service.
Okay, so businesses calling in.
It's what we're serving to the business, versus the general public.
Okay.
Yep.
On the page four, numbers have been consistent, relevant again to the Work Experience and CCMEP program. On page five, just a few more youth enrolled in the program, but we're really steady, over two hundred with our youth fourteen to twenty-four and CCMEP, right around two hundred and ten, two hundred and twenty. I don't know if you have any other questions on working, working, work experience.
Easy for you to say.
Moving to the Child Protective Services Division, have a few more children in care. Have total number at the end of May was a hundred and ninety-seven young people in our custody. Residential, on page six, which is something that we've worked really hard to make sure that the youth that are in residential treatment facilities are ones that are needing to be there, so we've been stepping youth down. At our highest, we were at twenty-five, so that peaked a little bit with, at twelve, but again, we're working to make sure those kids are not there long-term and that they're stepping down into a group home or a foster, therapeutic foster home. Child support, numbers very consistent, month to month. You see the passages piece for that contract that's ending nine thirty, and we had one new referral in May for that program. Case load sizes are steady at about ninety-two hundred as far as active child support cases. And then, at the end of the, at May, we ended with a hundred and ninety-five employees and that number fluctuates, but not gravely, probably between two and five employees each month. So, I don't know if you have any questions, comments, concerns?
Oh, we have concerns, but you're addressing all those, so.
Okay, so that was the April/May data report. And then, Lisa, do you wanna pull up a chair? They're not gonna take much of your time, but you did get in your packet, a PowerPoint that says the Impact Pro, Brian, you can come up too.
Come on, fine.
Okay. So, the Impact Program is the program that's gonna replace our Passages contract that ends nine thirty, and so, the program is a collaboration between Child Support and our Workforce Division, so Mandy's just gonna take a few minutes to talk about the new program and then, if we could maybe, Lisa, talk about the interface with the courts and how we've met with them and talked about it as well, so I'll just defer to you.
So, we wanted to come up with a program, and we said, oh, look, we'll begin with the end in mind, we wanted the goals to be a program that would get people to work and get obligors that had reurages and are not paying child support unemployment so that they could start making payments. So, the second page of this packet, if you look at it, that's a real nice, high-level overview of what the program will look like. It'll start with referrals, we can get those directly from the Child Support Division, we can get them from the courts through seek work orders, and we get them probably from any division of JFS. But once they come to us, then they're going to meet with the case manager, we have two people down at O M J that's going to case manage this group, and they will go through an assessment process. We are developing some assessment forms to look at things like employment history, what kind of barriers they have, so that in addition to programming, we can give them the supportive services that they need to get back to work. And then, once we go through the assessment process, they'll actually go through programming, which we have an initial thirty-day calendar that they'll start, program that they'll start, which is really heavy in job-ready skills, education, on why they need to pay their child support and why that's important. And they're also going to be involved with the MRT, which is a program, a collaboration that we have with Coleman. MRT is Moral Recognition Therapy, and so, that is a treatment that is designed to assist with increasing moral reasoning when they, when it comes to decision-making. We've had some positive outcomes with that program and so, we're gonna continue that with them. So, that will be a thirty-day process, and then hopefully, at that point, through that programming and case management, they'll start getting, in our assistance with job hunting, they'll be able to get some employment. If not, then we can continue further along, but hopefully, they will, we'll start to get some people employed. And then, we're gonna track our outcomes and we are, once somebody gets employed, then we will technically exempt them from the program, but we will follow up with them for about six months to make sure that as they're going along their way, they're not hitting any more barriers or circumstances, so that we can assist them with that. So, that's a real high-level view.
With that, we've always worked really close with Passages and the courts, where the courts will order individuals who are maybe facing enforcement actions like contempt and things like that, they would refer them to Passages, so now that we're ending that contract, we wanted to make sure that they were on board and understood this new program. So, I met with both judges, who know, I work with them, Judge Jordan was really interested in us, I mean, all her magistrates and her court mediator, so Mandy is gonna be meeting with them and talking about not only this program, but all the services that Ohio Means Jobs offered, because as I was touching on some of those up there, she was not really familiar with all of them and was really impressed, so Mandy's gonna take some time coming up and opening up her lunch.
And what'll be nice about this group is, once we have them identified and connected, we can start connecting them with our pipeline programs, the STNA that we have with Stark, the manufacturing program, so they'll be open to the other opportunities.
Training.
The training programs that we have, if they can't find employment.
This would prevent them from any enforcement actions, losing their license, going to jail, you know, any of that, if they're willing, they're able to enter the program, court is very happy to not impose any sanctions upon people, and they'll, they'll say, hey, see you back in six months, let's see how you're doing.
Yeah.
And the court likes to follow up and associate to meet Mandy.
Sounds good.
Great. Thank you, guys. Mandy is gonna, thanks for coming by. Rebecca Abbott, who's our administrator in Public Assistance, had an all-staff meeting today, so she couldn't be here, I wanted to give her some kudos. The next agenda item is a certificate. Every year, we are reviewed federally by the state. State monitors us for performance hurdles regarding food stamps, federal food stamps. And so, Rebecca has been at Portage County for the last twelve years, and this is the first year out of twelve that we've ever had a review without a continuous improvement plan, and so, it's, it's a large feat for Portage County, and so, I just wanted to recognize her, but she's not here. Mandy, who's over the Workforce Division, she plays a role in this because our participants that receive food assistance, if they're able-bodied, are required to participate in the jobs program, and so, that counts. And so, the auditors or the reviewers were really pleased with what we're doing, and so, hats off to the JFS team, despite the new eligibility system from the state and all the trainings we've undergone the last twelve months, for us to have an excellent review like that is, you know.
That's great.
It is great, so congratulations.
Vicki, can I ask a question?
Sure.
Does the Job and Family Services also help students get part-time jobs?
Yes.
In the summer, yes.
They do?
At bombing shots.
Absolutely.
And that's been fairly successful, hasn't it?
Yes. We have, there was once a summer youth program for young people, fourteen to twenty-four, and it's now year-round, so what was once just summer, we can now help to support employment twelve months of the year. The last thing, and then the admins are gonna go, is a request to add an additional comprehensive case management position. So, I just cited the numbers, and we've been consistent, over two hundred young people, fourteen to twenty-four in the program. When we started this program, and I, I don't know if you recall, it was in two thousand seventeen, this was Governor Kasich's initiative, and we didn't have a lot of guidelines at that time, and we still lack some of the guidelines that we needed to structure, like, they didn't dictate to us what our job descriptions need to look like, they didn't recommend a caseload size, which they still haven't done that. We just internally put a one worker to twenty-five ratio around case management, but because of the success of the program, we've grown beyond two hundred consistently, and we only have four case managers. We're seeing case managers juggle cases of about forty to fifty kids, and the barriers we're seeing are not just work and training barriers, we're seeing youth with mental health and addiction issues, some homelessness issues, so it's true on case management. And so, we just at this point think that we need to add a fifth position in this program, we do have the budget to do that, and so, I'm just asking for your support to add this fifth position.
You know, Kelly, what do you do with a teenager that's homeless? They're going to school. I heard about this last night, there was like five people on the football team in the Grand Rapids, that's homeless, and I'm thinking, we're really stay.
We've gotten phone calls that we, there's somebody sleeping on the bleachers, can you help them?
And we do.
And we do. We have, you know, if they're under eighteen, well, we have to, of course, connect with Children's Services, but if they're over eighteen, we have several places within the community that we have apartments or can help pay their lease with the CCMEP program. The supportive services are amazing and help us pay for those for some months with the goal of getting them employment so they can sustain it on their own.
Well, like, if they're fourteen or fifteen, though, doesn't there have to be some adult supervision in there somewhere?
We would engage Children's Services there to see, first assess if there's a family, other family, if there's maybe friends, and then, you know, oftentimes, there's a, you know, recourse of foster care, but we definitely would intervene and ensure there's no use.
So, you're very well aware of this. I, I had no idea there were kids going to high school but didn't have a home.
Well, when Kelly just says it's true case management, it is, because i- in the past, we've dealt with issues and there have been things, you know, we've had, we've had things come up, but the CCMEP program has brought to light some of those more major concerns of there are kids that are sleeping on bleachers, there are kids that don't have, you know, any support systems at all, and so.
Mental health, paralysis, suicidal ideations, you know.
We're dealing with, seeing a lot of it.
These homeless students, they have no family or where are their, where are their family at?
They do have family, sometimes their family, they're in a domestic situation with their family, sometimes they've been thrown out.
Yeah.
Sometimes they run away, there's, sometimes we find that there's other things going on in the home that, where they don't feel safe, so that's when our social work team comes in to assess the safety and risk, and, and then hopefully, if we need to mediate and try to work with the family, we can go in the home and do therapy, or we can have a child stay separate in a safe environment while we work on this dynamic, but sometimes families aren't the best options, and so, that's when we have to look at times to foster care and.
And you know, that was the most heartbreaking thing I heard, is there's a couple that their families just don't want them. I mean, it's just like, we don't want you, bye.
Some, some children are pretty much uncontrollable.
And I get that, Bruce, but there's gotta be another way than just throwing them out on the street, I mean.
But I heard in Kansas City Council, when they were talking about the LGBTQ problems, that there was this one girl who's in college now, but she's very, you know, when she was fourteen years old, her parents kicked her out because she's gay. At fourteen years old, now, they have a legal obligation. But that, that's the kinda thing that happens.
And it's not often talked about, but I think now that we're building great bridges with the school systems and they know about the program.
They're now calling us, they're picking up the phone and saying, can you help?
And not that we're the end-all-be-all, but I think for the first time, there is a case management piece specifically for young people, and I think that's a great thing, so.
Well, at least we have the case management in the school system.
School system, yeah, absolutely. So, hopefully, yeah.
Takes a lurch.
So, I, but could I have your support in adding that position?
Yes. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, thank you. Mandy, no, I'm not done, just Mandy.
She just dealt with you, Mandy.
Well, good one.
Thanks, Brian. Thank you.
Thank you.
So, my next item is relevant to the group home that we're trying to establish. I provided you with job descriptions, and I hope you had a chance to look at those, but with the group home, we would staff it around the clock with six staff, four social service worker threes, which is a similar classification, is the same classification that we have in Children's Services, and two managers. The first would be a program manager, so that program manager would oversee all the operations of the home, including the staff and the kids, ensure that the schedules are on par, that the dictation for cases are there, that food is purchased, that all the needs of the children are being met, and then, the clinical manager is a position that we would share between the group home and Children's Services. The clinical manager would be the broker between the youth and their counselors, their external counselors, medical providers, they would monitor medications that the youth are on, and then, they would also work in tandem with the social workers for our kids that are in custody. We really want to put our hands around medication and what children are on medication for, not that, sometimes, young people are over-diagnosed, but we'd like a neutral set of eyes that works with the providers, so.
Oh, sure.
Yeah, so for that, those are four positions that we would, we did not have the non-bargaining positions audited with Human Resources yet, so if you approve a physical job description, then those will go, the non-bargaining, to Janet Kovic and her team, and they would do a job audit. They would come back and tell us what that would be wage-wise classified as, so then, you'll get more information on that. And then, the social service worker three, I've already had the union president review that and they approved that job description. Those social workers would then become part of the union, so the social workers would be union positions and the two managers would be non-bargaining management positions.
Would the program manager report to you?
Yes, both the clinical and the program manager would report to me, it would be direct reports to me.
And why wouldn't the clinical report to the program manager? That's just, it's that typical.
I would like to see them collaborate with the new Family First federal legislation that we're still receiving information on from, coming from the state. Group homes are now going to be required to have accreditation, so I see those as team members work, 'cause we're, as soon as we open the doors, we're gonna need to start on applying for accreditation. There's also a requirement to have twenty-four-hour medical nurse services, so I just see their responsibilities as parallel versus one over the other. They're different roles, but I see a clinical manager as important as a program manager, so I, I wanted them to kind, but now, they could come back factor differently, so I don't know, if they were to come back factor differently, then I might need to modify it if they would report under, but right now, typically see those in parallel positions in other systems.
Okay. I thought that looked, these looked good.
Okay, and then, the last item that I had was just the sub-grant agreement that comes out every two years for all eighty-eight county Job and Family Services between the Department of Medicaid, Ohio Department of Job and Family Services, and the local county boards of commissioners. It just says that we, as a Job and Family Services, under your umbrella, will adhere to the guidelines under code, and it acknowledges the financial responsibility.
Is this in there or do we need to sign this?
Um, I, my resolution came late because I didn't send it two years ago and I needed to, so I sent an electronic version and then I have paper resolutions here too, so if you, I don't know, Joanne, how do we wanna do it, here or not here?
So, it's not in there for us to sign?
No.
Okay.
The agreement's in your packet, but the resolution I have it. Right. And the resolution, I think, Amy, did you, did you or Julie fix it? Okay. There were some pieces and parts that were missing in the resolution.
Okay, okay.
You'd already sent it and I was up there, so I was looking at them.
Okay.
So, why don't I see if Julie can fix it so that you can pass it today and then we can get the signatures on it, because I know that she needs to get that back to the folks as soon as possible.
Okay.
Okay, sounds good.
And the only other item that's not on my agenda that I just wanted to approach with you because I'm not here next Thursday, is I talked to the auditor yesterday and we did, I asked if we could have an advance on our tax money again, we would have received it in August, and we asked if we could have it for July, she's happy to do that and to accommodate us, so I'll be sending through our consent agenda a resolution, asking for you to support an advance of the tax money, it's about four hundred thousand dollars, and we are still waiting for the state tax budget information to come out, very eager, all eighty-eight counties that we're gonna have an increase in child bill for dollars, and so, we're looking forward to August.
Joe, question, Bruce?
Yeah, what educational requirements are for these positions that you were talking about?
The group home positions?
Yeah, there were some other positions you were talking about.
The case management position is a two-year associate's degree in the Workforce Division. The social work positions are bachelor's degrees, the clinical manager and the program manager are master's degree in a behavioral health background.
Okay.
Probably with years of experience.
Yeah, and there's, there's a connection of years of experience. Those differ, I think, the case managers are with two years, but the managers, I think, are five years.
See, that'll come into the factor, you know.
Yeah. And so, I just wanted to keep you, give you an update on that resolution next week and.
Appreciate it. Thank you so much.
Thank you so much.
Good day.
Will I have Janet come in? Come back in? Is this, I think this, what we got before is the same thing, it's in our packet today, isn't it?
I think so. Julie's gonna fix that.
Okay.
So, did you sign anything for Kelly-Jo? Or you have it there to sign?
I have it here.
I pulled it out, yeah.
Because we wanna make sure, we haven't had a copy of it in our electronic scanned contracts either.
Oh, okay.
So, she sent us the one from seventeen to put in, and I wanna make sure that we get it in there before it gets out to everybody. So, are we the first signer then? Yes, that's what I can, from what I can tell, the state will sign last. Has Kelly-Jo signed it?
Yeah, I don't think so, no, I didn't see them.
Okay, we'll get, I'll get her to sign it first too then, and we'll keep a copy before it goes to the state and then we will get, that will be our tickler to know that we need to get the state's signature back.
Is this the one we wanna sign?
Yes.
Janet, is in our packet the same thing as this?
Yes.
Okay, that's what I thought, I just wanna make sure.
Yeah, the packet you have, I just looked at it so I was getting reference easier. I don't know if you guys had a chance to review the packet that I gave to a couple of coaches, so you can have it beforehand, just to review before I come today, and we talk about the performance evaluation templates that were created with the packets, like, like, we could, like, yes, the packet that I gave you is just tabbed, so you can have to reference it. It is the same packet that was part of the VOC agenda. In your packet, section one of the packet included all of the current performance evaluations that your, that your departments are using, and that included all seven, and also included the, the evaluation templates that were approved for JFS and Water Resources. And then, section B of the packet included the proposed evaluation templates.
Now, have the directors looked at this, the proposed?
They have not.
They have not? 'Cause I would, I would really like them to look at it to, you know. Get their opinion on it. They're gonna be the ones using it, you know, and they may see something in there that obviously we're not as familiar with, their job descriptions.
I wouldn't give them this much, I would just give them, no, I didn't say, but just don't over overload what you give them to look at, 'cause then I think we'll get better feedback.
Do you want me to give them the one I, the proposed for the employee supervisor and director, or just the director?
For their department, is what I want them to have.
Employee, not the director.
Yeah.
Okay.
'Cause they're not gonna, you, you mean for them to do their own, the self-evaluation, is that what you're talking about?
Well, they could complete the self-evaluation, I mean, they could use the same template, whatever's, whatever's final approved.
Yeah.
They could, they could take this template that I proposed and create a self-evaluation from that template. Yeah, I was just asking, just 'cause.
I just don't overwhelm them, you know.
Right, right, no, I mean, I would give, if you want me to give the directors, just section B, that they would review the employee one, the supervisor, and then also their own would be the director one. Like, so JFS, JFS has their own employee one, they're working on a supervisor one, and Water Resources has employee and a supervisor that they created and approved, got approved by you guys.
I would think you would tailor, depending on who you're giving it to, I mean, if you're giving it to Todd, Todd doesn't have supervisor, so that's not one that he needs to look at, but.
Okay.
If you would, maybe have input on the employee version.
I could, yeah, I can see do that.
But Kelly-Jo, who has a large staff, unless she has her own, she does, right? Or she, she.
I know she's worked on it.
Yeah.
And she continuously updates it, yeah.
She's creating a supervisor one for her own department that isn't yet.
So, just depending on who the director is, I think, you make that decision.
I can do that.
Yes.
So, yeah, these were just my, my proposed, and, you know, the board had asked me to create something, so I, I tried to create the evaluation template that's common for all departments, at the same time, the template also allows opportunities for the department to add.
Sure.
Categories are specific for the department, except for Water, Water Resources at JFS, they can continue using their own if they want, so. Wait, that's, I mean, that's just what I wanna present today, just to give an idea of what I'm thinking.
Yeah, it was very helpful that you marked them off for the ones you gave us ahead of time.
Agree. Yes, I could send this to the director and we'll come back with a feedback. Sounds good. Okay. And then, the email that I sent regarding the IRS landing agreement, are you guys okay with that, or do you want me to look at that in the policy again, or?
I was okay with that, it made sense.
Yes. That was it?
Thanks, Janet.
Thanks, Janet.
Did you have any questions on any of the resolutions deadline?
No, I feel bad, Julian, but I should've said that.
That's.
We got here.
That's right.
So, I, I didn't.
I have one, but I'm not even sure if you know the answer to this one, and it's the Water Resources contract, I just wondered what services we were talking about there.
For the sand pump thing? Um, no, but I have the contract downstairs.
You do?
So, I can look it up and I can email you. There, let me see what it.
Um, there, let me see what it.
And is that limit, is that just right under, is that?
Correct, they went out and they got some cost proposals and that was the lowest one they received. So, um, it could've gone in as a purchase order or as a contract. And I think that the prosecutor's office usually likes to see it in a contract form because then we have backup documentations with, were there workers comp forms and insurance forms and those kinds of things.
Okay.
So, that's why then, since it was a contract, I had them, I wrote the resolution for them so that we could have them married.
Okay.
Yeah.
Okay, that's fine.
But it's, yeah, but they, they did, yeah, they did go out and they, they got proposals from various companies and this was the low one.
Okay.
Yeah, we just didn't have to formally get it.
Okay, if you, if you can send me some information later, I'm fine with it as it is.
Okay.
It just would be helpful.
Sure.
So, I'm, as I'm getting accommodated with their.
Okay.
Contracting.
Okay.
No.
Okay, we'll pass the consent agenda.
Yes, so I will, uh, move to pass, uh, the consent agenda for June thirteenth, twenty nineteen.
And I will second real call in, Kathleen?
Yes.
Vicki?
Yes.
I love the journal entries.
I messed up my packet.
That's easy to do. I usually try to put stuff over.
I don't need more, so I can find it real quick. I took all the clips out. I'm learning my lesson by now. Here it is.
The last sheet.
So, I will move to pass a journal entry for June twentieth, twenty nineteen.
And I will second real call in, Kathleen?
Yes.
Vicki?
Yes.
So, we will recess.
I got that one.
Um, oh, yeah, that's the, that should be the resolution for Kelly Jo.
Oh, okay.
And then we'll recess for. Let me just think, read this real quick.
Oh, I see, there's a strike the December sixth, two thousand and eighteen at the bottom. On the date, yeah, they don't have to have today's date.
Which is June twentieth, nineteen. Okay, that's the only thing I see, is that the only thing you see, Joanne?
Yes. And I have the approval from David in written form.
Okay.
That it was looked at by the prosecutor that I said we would attach to our electronic form to make sure, since there wasn't a space for him to sign, actually I'm reading.
Okay.
Okay. So, I'll make a motion to, uh, pass a resolution regarding the execution of the sub-grant agreement between the Portage County Board of Commissioners, Ohio Department of Job and Family Services and the Ohio Department of Medicaid.
With the gen, the date change at the bottom.
With, as amended.
Yeah, uh, I will second real call in.
Kathleen?
Yes.
Vicki?
Yes.
Before you adjourned, did we wanna talk a little bit about Karen Marlowe's request of, um, using tax dollars for training?
Yes.
Yeah.
Before recess.
The training is set for Monday and she wanted an answer and, um, Todd wasn't here.
Yeah.
But I, I mean, I know that they knew that training was coming.
Yeah.
Um, and I guess just she wants.
Did you see that email, Kathleen?
When did that come?
Yesterday.
I, yeah, she, she just called me yesterday about it and I said, put it in memo form and send it because.
I denied.
Yeah, so.
If I, if I got it, when did it come late?
Well, I forwarded to you with my question.
Yeah.
At like one fifty-three in the afternoon, yeah.
Okay.
Yeah. It's okay, Joanne's gonna go.
So, basically, um, the instructor that's coming, well, we've had training all week this week with maintenance and, um, they did put one staff member from the sheriff's office in doing some training with them. Um, Granger's doing a great job and they're making sure that we're videotaping all the training, that we'll have copies of all of that for future reference in people who couldn't. But this next week's training, the three days, the lady that's coming out, this is on the electronic door controls of the doors.
Yes.
Um, central control kinda stuff, so it's actually the corrections officers that we want to try to get, to get that, to receive that training direct on. While she has like fifty of them that need trained, but she can't bring all of them in because they're crossing, um, uh, their, the second, third shift have to come in first shift and so forth, so that's where the overtime comes in. She only wants to try to get like twenty of them trained because she feels like they can help the next set when it comes, plus we'll have that recorded training. So, she was concerned about the funding for the overtime. She didn't want it to come out of their current budget, which I agree, you know, in all fairness, that it doesn't have anything to do with training for a new pod.
The training is vital.
Correct, you have to, I mean, and so, and so forth, I mean, I, I think they're still trying to get employees hired and so forth, but I think that I just wanted to be able to get, give her the okay today to go ahead and get your people scheduled for Monday 'cause that's where she had stopped until she gets some kinda confirmation from us saying, yes, we'll use fund two, not, not his general fund budget.
Right.
And I, like I said, I feel that's appropriate, so if it's okay with you, I'll respond to her and let her know she can go ahead and get her people set up and then I'll work with Todd to get whatever money has to go into whatever line for her.
Right.
And that fund two is the.
Sales tax.
Okay.
Yeah.
And, and there are contingency funds.
Yes.
Yeah.
We have money there that we need to, you know, if we have to move it from one to another to get it, but yeah.
Yeah, that's fine, all right.
Is that okay with you?
Yes.
I'll take care of that.
The sooner the better.
Yeah, um, and then in the packet, in the contract file today, there are the commissary and the, um, inmate calling that the resolutions passed last week, those are in there for you to sign. The other side hasn't signed them yet, the sheriff hasn't signed them yet, but I did have confirmation from Chris Moudry that they were okay to go. Again, in writing, so I'll have that to attach. Um, you will see the one, I crossed out a section, an indemnification that they wanted, they wanted us to indemnify them and we never indemnified the other party, so that's there for an initial part.
Okay.
And I just wanted to make sure that you were aware that we're working backwards to get signatures, but we'll get them all.
Okay.
All right?
Well, as long as we're in the legal line.
Well, and, and we needed, we needed to get those moving because they do wanna open that pod or start to be able to use that pod very soon.
But we were given the date, July third, is that recent with you or?
Right now, still, that's what we're shooting for, so. Because we know that we can move corrections officers that are currently in the men's pods that are going to be, those men are going to be moved into the new while they renovate the men. So, we've got corrections officers there that are already working that can move to the new. Um, and I think that, you know, from what I hear, it's right on schedule to do, but.
You know, Joanne, I've noticed the numbers are down lately.
Well, it, you know, after we, we got the one email message about two hundred eighty, I'm like, I don't know that I.
It was two ninety-seven one day.
So, yeah, today, I think, was it two thirty-something?
Yeah.
Yeah, so it fluctuates so much for them and I can imagine that like coming next week or, you know, July fourth week, you're probably gonna see the numbers go up right around the holiday kinda thing, um.
We've been working with the judges a little bit too, I think those conversations have helped.
I do too.
To meet tomorrow, to talk about capacity issues.
Since they.
Because I think we've, we've stressed it before and I think it was, it was going along good, but then I think, you know, obviously when it's someone's in front of a judge and they think they need to go, they're, they're not always thinking of the whole picture.
Right.
Kinda remind them again that, you know, they don't have to go there.
That's not, yeah.
Just to have communication, make sure.
So important on every level.
Yeah.
Absolutely.
All right.
Thank you so much, Joanne.
No problem.
Yeah, I appreciate it. So, we will recess till public comment.
Can I ask you one thing about Tuesday, do you have discussion items?
Do you have anything else?
No.
I don't even.
Can you cancel?
So, just to clarify in case I'm missing something, did, um, the personnel actions that Kelly Jo was talking about, the additional case manager, are those on here somewhere or are those being approved another day?
Those will be approved another day.
She just wanted us to be aware.
I.
Okay.
That it was coming.
And then with the CDL drivers, didn't, how many positions did you guys have open originally when this whole issue started?
Well, I thought it was four, but then I, I guess we've been, um, less five for a long time, which I just learned.
Yeah.
And we, we approved four today, so.
Yeah, I think they were only looking to hire two.
Initially.
Initially, and then, and now they're hiring four and they have actually five openings.
They gotta run, they haven't got anything.
No, 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 you're fine.